Board of Education meeting for September 13th to order. This evening's attendance, we have everyone here except for John Dunn and Amy Steinbeck. I have not heard from Jesse Temple, but I hope he will arrive shortly. With that, if you could please rise and join me with a pledge of allegiance.
What do you think about the United States of America? What do you think about what your stance on immigration? Do you think about what the Republican Justice for our?
Thank you, everyone. First order of business, we want to welcome our student council representatives from Columbia High School, Roan and it's Cole.
Cole unfortunately cannot make it.
Could not make it, okay.
Yes, but I would like to quickly reintroduce myself for those of you who may not know me. My name is Roan Butterfield and I am now the president of student council, which is very exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And my fellow officers and I are super, super excited for this year and we're going to do many great things. Unfortunately, Cole Hardy cannot be with us tonight, but he sends his best regards and I'm sure you will be meeting him soon. Most recently, the student council hosted our first student-run freshman orientation, which included a tour of Columbia, a club fair, and speaker sessions about getting involved, teacher and school expectations, and a safety information session. We had our first official council meeting of the year today, which was awesome. We had a great turnout, many freshmen, which is very exciting for us. And we discussed our upcoming events such as Spirit Week, pep rally, and homecoming. And I will say that I'm very excited to see how everything turns out. It's gonna be super fun. And as always, thank you to the board for having us and hearing what we have to present. And that is all that I have for everyone tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Roan. Next order of business is the minutes from the draft, the draft minutes for the meetings on 23rd and 29th. I looked at the attendance, it looks like we probably won't have a corner given that Jesse's not here. So I'd like to award, if we can move those to the next meeting. Okay. Next, we'll go to our board forum, an opportunity for our board members to speak on any topics they wish to do to start the meeting. I'll start at my left with Cheryl. Good. Cheryl.
Well said, thank you.
Denver. I just want to say, you know, the events of the last couple of days have been very upsetting to the school committee and I really appreciate the work of our administration, our superintendent, looking with our local law enforcement and others to protect our school community, to our students and families. Been very disruptive and I know Mr. Simons will have some comments a little bit later. But I just want to know that the community that we protect, your safety in your school, we take it very seriously as a board, we always have, and we feel that the actions have been taken to protect our schools and to address anything. Working with our local law enforcement, we've been able to rise to the challenge. I want to thank our families and students for everything that they do as well. So with that, we will go to our public forum. President, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to assistant concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in your future. Those persons who wish to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed, the business forum is not deemed to be open for them. The board president will conduct the forum through orderly division of operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may concern defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Does anyone like to address the board at this time? No? Do you want to give Mr. Simons an opportunity at this time or do you want to wait?
I think I'll do it now.
Do it now? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simons.
So good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Education meeting. I appreciate everyone who comes out to our public board meetings to engage with our school board and to learn about the school district activities and issues that are occurring within the school district. So this evening, I was preparing to deliver some remarks on the success of the school opening, and I do want to deliver those remarks because we really have had, despite the challenges of the last few days, a really good opening. There's a lot of magic happening in our classrooms thanks to our teachers and our support staff and the building leadership. So we can't forget that during a time of emergency and when we're operating a little bit differently, that for the most part, in our classrooms, great instruction is occurring and great support is occurring within our buildings for all of our students and our families. With that being said, when it comes to school safety, I want to talk about my approach and the approach of our district to the parents directly. When it comes to safety, your kids are my kids, and I think that's the attitude of every administrator of the district and every staff member in this Board of Education. And so when we take steps to ensure that our schools can respond to a threat such as we received this week, we do it from a mindset of what would we want for our own children? And so the measures that we put in place in terms of the secure lockout are to balance the needs to continue our educational program, to make sure that our students are receiving the instruction that they need, and also to balance those considerations against the measures that we need to take depending on the nature of the threat. We work with law enforcement and Detective Mike Guadagnino is here with us from the East Greenwood Police Department. He, Chief Rozinski, Prince County Sheriff's Department, have been very, very supportive in working with the district, not only in response to what has occurred over the last few days, but on an ongoing basis. They often participate in our administrative meetings and they work with us on an ongoing basis on our safety protocol. So when something happens such as a call to Golf Middle School left on a voicemail machine or a call answered by a nurse, we are prepared to go into action and we make a threat assessment. That threat assessment is made in coordination with the police department. What is a threat assessment? There's a lot of regional training, statewide training, and national training that helps schools figure out how to determine how to respond appropriately to a particular emergency or particular threat. We would respond differently to a message left on a machine or a phone call than we might an intruder who we spotted on one of our campuses. So in this particular case, this particular week, we're getting some questions from parents, why can't you tell us the specifics of the threat? I would be negligent if I were to do that. There's an ongoing law investigation, legal, criminal investigation occurring regarding this involving local police, state police, and federal authorities, and I have full confidence in law enforcement investigating this. But if I share the actual threat with you of what happened with the parents, I'm compromising their investigation and I'm potentially fueling further threats to come onto the district. I don't know who's necessarily monitoring our communication. I assume that most of the parents receive this information and respond through me, through email, but anybody out there can look on our Facebook page, look on our website, can see how we respond to particular incidents, and I'm not going to share specifics with somebody who might try to cause further disruption of our schools. That in some cases causes a level of concern for our families to increase, but I assure you, our schools are safe. Our schools are safe, and this particular threat that we received this week will dissipate and we will be back to normal business. As things change, as we learn a little bit more, we will try to share as much information with you as possible. We live in a society where people want instant information, but in some cases, particularly when it comes to school safety, we can't always provide you with everything you're looking for, but we can provide you with the assurances that we are doing everything within our power, our control, and our authority to keep the kids safe. We set a high standard in the East Greenwood Central School District for school safety and we maintain that standard. And we don't, we want to forget the good things that are happening in our schools and in our classrooms. Again, this too shall pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So I appreciate those comments and addressing what has recently occurred. We now go to your report, so right into the school opening, the positives and the opening of school from last week.
So I want to start by talking about some of the themes that we spoke about with our faculty and staff on opening days. Last year, our Board of Education took a hard look at its goals and we joined an organization called Learning 2025 sponsored by the American Association of School Administrators. And there are three key ideas or key priorities that we talked about with our faculty and our staff. And the first is to be future-driven. As we think about the curriculum that we're delivering to the students, the type of instructional activities that we engage our students in, we want to make sure that they are developing the skills they need to prepare for a very changing world. For example, artificial intelligence. We've had guest speakers come in over the last two weeks to talk about the impact that artificial intelligence is currently having on the workforce as well as the skills that students are going to need and how it's going to impact education. And so we're promoting the idea that as we think about instruction courses and what we offer our kids, let's make sure that we're preparing our students for their futures and not our past. Second area of priority is to be as whole child-centered or whole learner-centered as possible. We know that academic success is very, very important to our community, but also we cannot achieve academic success if we don't provide the social, emotional supports, mental health supports that our kids need to be successful. There's a lot of support that this Board of Education has approved to provide mental health services to our students. We want to look at students in ways that not only focus on the academic skills that we want them to have, but we want them to feel a level of support should they need to be able to receive extra services or simply to take a pause from their rigor of their academic studies to engage with our faculty, to engage with our staff in ways that provide them with what they need. And the third area, and we emphasize this quite a bit in our district, we want to be safe, inclusive, and diverse. We want all of our children, all of our families, all of our faculty and staff to feel welcome, to feel safe, but also to feel that they are a big part of what makes the East Greenwood Central School District community so special. We want to make sure that no matter the background of our students or our families, that we are welcoming, that we're providing a type of learning environment for which all kids can grow and learn, and all families can engage successfully within our schools. So safe, inclusive, and diverse schools is a priority for the board and a priority for our district. Shifting to the students being welcomed back, it was terrific to see the students back in our classrooms on our, on our opening days. If you haven't had a chance to see the great photos that Mark Adam takes of all the smiling faces in the backpacks, one thing that Mark did this year, and I'm not sure he's done in years past, he reached out to families ahead of time and asked if they wanted to take the favorite photo of their child in their backpack on the front porch or waiting for the bus to send it in, and we have some of those photos included on our Facebook page as well. And as I said earlier, kids are excited about learning, teachers and staff are excited about being back, and overall, with the exception of the issues that we just spoke about, the activities of our classrooms and in our schools are proceeding in support of our student success.
Any questions for Jeff? Really, I want to mention too is we did have that flooding event at the Golf Middle School. I want to thank our, it was really a tremendous effort by the staff to get things ready and prepare for that as well, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Buno. I want to expand on that a little bit. I've been over at Golf many times, including Friday night when the flood came down off of Gilligan Road into the front of the school. The custodial and maintenance staff did a terrific job Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday under direction of Paul Bickle and Jimmy Trotz, the head custodian, to get that building ready for Monday. Additionally, the teachers and the staff have been dealing with, they say bad things happen in threes, so hopefully it's over with. We had a flood on Friday night, we had the threats on Monday and Tuesday, and we had the air conditioner go last Friday. So I'll ask Mr. Bickle to give a status report on the air conditioner in a little bit, but the faculty and the staff and the administration at Golf Middle School has really risen to the occasion during this. You wouldn't know that all of these things have happened if you walked through the school in terms of what you're seeing in the gym with the physical education classes or the cafeteria, with the kids having lunches, or the kids really focused in the classrooms and the faculty and staff are working through those conditions and making it as normal as possible for the kids. So they've endured a lot under Mr. McHugh's direction and the assistant principals, they pulled it together. I think there was a fourth thing that happened today, Mr. McHugh, but we won't talk about that right now, it's not, not a major thing, but it was related to the moisture that gets into that building, but I think they've really done a great job of, no pun intended, keeping their head above water and focusing around the kids.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, in talking about that, to the next part of our conversation, your report about capital project planning is a real exciting part of some things we're talking about as a district and capital projects for the future, for our redesign of our classrooms and other things that we participated in, so I'll turn you over to this part in construction management.
So our board has been working with the district administration to complete the project that was approved by the voters in 2017, and with the exception of the Janay new playground, that project is fairly complete, and all of the appropriate submissions to the state education department are being made to close out that project. Additionally, a committee made up of myself, Paul Bickle, our director of facilities, our board president, Mike Buno, our board vice president, Mark Mann, engaged in a process called Request for Proposals to select a new architectural firm. That architectural firm will help us to plan our next project, and we're hoping to have a project proposal out to the voters in May. On the agenda this evening is our recommendation to appoint La Bella Associates, an architectural firm that has a statewide and national reputation. We believe that La Bella can bring the resources necessary to our district to offer our community a great project in the future and to work through any issues with the district that are necessary to continue to maintain and improve our facilities. Additionally, we went out for a request for proposal for our new construction management firm. We had four responses received by the district today, and we'll be formulating a committee to go through a similar process, and we'll be looking for any board members who may want to serve on the committee to select the next construction management firm. And Mike Buno has raised his hand, and Mark Mann has raised his hand, so we'll sign you up again.
Stand up, keep going, the process. Anybody else want to participate? It was a very thorough process, I'll talk about it a little bit here.
It's very important for the community to realize that we have well-maintained facilities, but they're old and that they do require a lot of work, and you really can't do anything above $10,000 in a school facility without a capital project. So we've gone through the process of identifying our needs and now we're going through the process once our architect is in place to figure out what the proposal will be, try to address a balance of health, maintenance, and systems issues with improvements to our classrooms and improvements to our athletic fields.
So the next item on our superintendent's report is communication report from Mark Adam.
Mr. Adam, Mark Adam is our communications, public communications specialist. Mr. Adam is responsible for working with the district staff and administration to put out information. He handles anything posted on our Facebook page, our website, now Parents Square, does a terrific job, and each year he gives an annual report about our communications program. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Mark Adam. I'm the public information specialist for the East Greenwood Central School District, and I manage our communications for the school district. So just in general, the objective is to continue to foster positive relationships with our families and community through effective communication. And some highlights from this past school year, the school budget and bus purchase were approved in May, we launched our new communication platform, Parents Square, for our staff, parents, and students, continue to post engaging content on our district website, maintain social media presence, and we appeared in the local media more than 50 times. Right, got a little trick here. Are you with me? All right, so here's just a snapshot of our website from the past year. We increased our web traffic by 13%. You can see the 21-22 school year on the left compared with last school year, and it just gives a sense of the total visits to our website, total number of page views, and how much time users spent on our website. Here's a view of the school year with a line graph. The blue line is last school year and the orange line is the year prior. So you can just see with that visual, it was a little higher last year in terms of our web traffic. Those dips are our school breaks and summer vacation, and the high point there near the end was March 30th with the lockdown. There's some other figures there just in terms of our web traffic. Here's a year-over-year graph showing our website traffic from 2012 through this past school year and just a steady trajectory up. That'd be great, thanks, Peter. Here's a look at the top web pages that were visited last school year. So obviously, the district homepage had the highest views just because that's where most people are entering the website, but we also have high numbers on Power School as parents and staff are trying to enter that, but then you also see Columbia High School, Golf Middle School, our employment page, and so on. Here's our top 10 news stories from this past school year. A few of those are about school calendar and events, some about Power School, school supply lists, all the natural things that our families are interested in. Here is a bar graph just showing the last five school years, month by month, the number of news stories that we post. So the dark blue line for each month is the past school year, and just gives a sense of the number of stories. So if you look at March, typically there's between 60 and 75 news stories posted in a month. Parents Square was a huge project last year. We replaced School Messenger as our communication platform with Parents Square. So we launched that in September following a testing period over the summer and training sessions that were offered to faculty, staff, and parents, and it offers email, text, voice, and app notifications. It's used for emergency notifications and automatic attendance notifications that go out each morning, and importantly, it enhances our two-way communication between school and home. So our teachers and staff have the ability to post updates for families, share photos and videos, and to keep them more engaged in what's happening in the classroom. It also gives the ability for our families to reply to those posts and to message back and forth with our teachers on a one-on-one basis. So if they have a question for a teacher, they can send a quick message, but also our faculty can use it. You know, if a student had a really good day or showing improvement in an area, they can send a quick message using Parents Square. Parents Square, Peter, can you just go back for a second? Parents Square also offers language translation for more than 100 languages, which is increasingly important with our growing ENL population. So they can choose whatever language is best for them, and when they send something to a teacher, it comes across in English, and when they respond to the family, it is translated back to their chosen language. And at the end of the school year, last year, we sent a survey to our stakeholders, to our staff, to our parents, and to our Columbia High School students because they're also on Parents Square, and I have a report on that, I'm happy to share that with the board, but really, really positive feedback, satisfaction across all three areas. So we're in year two of Parents Square. The start of the school year is always a bit frantic with new staff, new teacher accounts, and getting our families in the right place, but I'm also planning on sharing out some more information about Parents Square with our families and even hosting a training session or forum for the families if that's something they're interested in. So for the third year in a row, last year, all of our Board of Education meetings were livestreamed just like they are right now, and then those videos are posted on our YouTube channel. Kudos to our technology department who puts this all together for every meeting, but I think this is something that came from the pandemic and now it's expected, but also it's, you know, it's a public meeting and a lot of times our families can't get out to a meeting at 7:00 on a Wednesday, so this gives them the opportunity to be able to see what's going on in our school district and the policies that are being made. We also posted some other meetings, some budget meetings in the spring, so people can be informed about the proposed school budget, and we livestreamed both Golf Elevation Celebration and Columbia Graduation. We also posted a recruitment video just to try and help out, bringing in more teachers, staff, bus drivers, et cetera. We continue to use social media to engage with our stakeholders, with Twitter, now known as X, and with Facebook and Instagram, so just a nice way that we can share quick updates and images and videos with our families. We were shown in the news media 52 times the usual outlets like Albany Times Union, Troy Records, BS6, WAMC, and there's just a few images there of some of those stories. We had some stories about our Stop Arm Camera project and that important safety initiative. We had a naturalization ceremony at Columbia High School for new citizens, and in the bottom right there is some photos of our Green Meadow students working on a toolbox building exercise with local contractors. In March, we held our first district-wide book club. This came out of our committee to promote global education, and it was the Unity and Community Book Club. So for a month, everyone in the district, students, faculty, staff, parents, community members, were invited to all read the same book, The Elephant in the Room by Holly Goldberg-Sloan, and really caught on and engaged a lot of people reading the same book, having the same conversations, important class discussions and projects. We had a lot of guest readers, you can see Chief Rozinski there in a photo. We also had a large stuffed element, elephant named Vida who was brought around town, grocery stores, and Stewart's, and kids were excited to have their picture taken. So it was just a really positive literacy initiative, and from a communication standpoint, we shared a lot of news, a lot of photos, and then at the end, we had a culminating event bringing in the author of the book, Holly Goldberg-Sloan. So that was a big project we had that pulled together, teachers, principals, librarians, and folks from the community for a really positive project. Here's just a list of some other projects. Each year, we put together the district calendar, which is posted on our website, but it's also printed and distributed to all of our families and our school staff. Each spring, we share budget information, including the printed newsletter that's mailed to all district residents. We post budget documents and videos to make sure that we keep everyone informed on what they'll be voting on in May. For the second year in a row, we were selected as the best school district in the Times Union Best of Contest. That's a vote of the public, and we helped promote that contest. I also visited the ENL Open House last year here in Janay Elementary School to provide Parents Square support to those families, and in March, I presented at the New York School Public Relations Association Conference about writing for school public relations. The year coming ahead, we've already put together the calendar, it's already gone home and distributed to staff. It's already gone home and distributed to staff, so that project is complete. We have a number of other things in the hopper, but the other significant project is a website redesign. We last redesigned the website seven years ago in 2016. So it's just come to be time to freshen that up a little bit. Most importantly, just give a better mobile version of the website. As we see with our analytics, more and more people are accessing our website from their phones or tablets. So we want to make sure that all the information that we have on our website is easily accessible to them. So that is it for my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Anyone? More members?
One comment is I completely support Parent Square. We have a lot of positivity from the community on it, so thank you. Before, we were kind of communicating this way, that way, this way. Now we have one central place, so truly appreciate it. Power Schools is not up yet, right?
Correct.
I'm just not sure. Like, I'm getting a lot of questions from people, when's it gonna come up? I don't know if we can communicate.
Yeah, Power School is under the Department of Technology. I want to say in the next day or two, they're gonna reopen that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have a question, Mark. I don't have a question, but just there's so much that goes on in this district and there's so many families involved. So thank you. You do a really good job getting the information out in a variety of mediums, so thank you.
Kudos, Mark. I think seeing the website, my question was gonna be website redesign and it's time to freshen it up. Looking forward to seeing what kind of ideas and what you're looking for for that, for the website.
Yeah, and with that project, I've had an introductory meeting with Questar Bosi's. We're gonna partner with them on the project, just like we did in 2016.
You got the analytics. You said something about the Parent Square. Is there analytics related to Parent Square?
Yeah, we have a data dashboard in Parent Square. So on every alert or post that we send out, we can see the notifications that go out, who has opened it, or if something bounced and it didn't go through. So we also can see who appreciates things, essentially liking something. So this afternoon, we sent out some information to parents just about how to talk to kids about school safety in age-appropriate ways. And in the first hour, I think it had 50 appreciation. So I think it's nice to see that feedback. But again, as Michelle said, it's a centralized communication tool that everyone is utilizing, and it provides that two-way communication between our schools and our families.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else? All right, excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business on our agenda is discussion items, school safety, educational climate incident counts. This is an annual report that we do for the board and for the community on last year's results.
So I want to thank Marissa Cannon and the building administrators for putting this report together. Throughout the school year, the building administrators or the assistant principals and their clerical staff make sure that the appropriate disciplinary incidents are categorized into the state categories, which are required under the School Safety and Educational Climate Incident Report. Marissa compiles that report and files it with the state. And annually, we provide this report to the Board of Education, which includes the district-wide report, but also individual school reports. In comparison, last year to the prior year, 2223 compared to 2122, we were about the same in total number of incidents. However, in our work with our schools, including enforcement of our Code of Conduct, our DASSA policy, our Social Emotional Learning Committee, and some of the supports we're putting in in terms of mental health and behavioral intervention, there are some categories that we are focused on, including the category of discrimination, bullying, and harassment, which is a challenge for many school districts. We are, through our SEL committee, as well as through our multi-tiered systems of support work that leaves some HARC coordinates and the work that our DASSA coordinators, who are charged with investigating and responding to incidents that are reported in this category, we are intervening and responding to these types of issues. The overall number of incidents in comparison to our overall enrollment is pretty small. However, even one incident is getting our attention in terms of the addressing it. We also know from some of the discussions we've had recently and some of the information that we have sent out to our community that, in some cases, these types of incidents are triggered by student involvement in social media and on the phones. Particularly as kids are sometimes engaging with each other on social media through platforms such as Snapchat or TikTok or others, Instagram, it's not always appropriate in the way that they're engaging with one another. And it is more frequently the case that school administrators and staff are being held accountable for behaviors that may occur in the evenings or the weekends, and we respond to those. We had some incidents on the first day of school that where families came in and talked to us about some ongoing student-to-student issues that occurred over the summer and turning to us for some solutions. So we work in this area, and the numbers aren't necessarily capture the whole story regarding the level of intervention and support that we put into helping our students engage more appropriately. So we don't have as many disciplinary incidents categorized as discrimination, harassment, and bullying, which is a national trend facilitated and increased due to social media. So this is one of the reasons why we revisited our cell phone policy this year, and we are having the cell phones completely away at the middle school level. Kids can have them before school and kids can have them after school. The high school, we're allowing a little more autonomy for our students to make good But this particular category of incident is one that we are really focused on. Additionally, when we have incidents of physical contact or physical violence within the schools that rise to a certain level, some of these categories have changed. For example, you have, there's a difference between a fight or an altercation and an assault. The definition of an assault has changed now, and we are obligated in the school district to classify only those disciplinary incidents that meet the definition of assault as determined by the penal law, which was changed a couple of years ago. So one of the things actually we've done, we did today, and we're gonna continue to do, is we're working with our attorneys to provide training to our administrators, not only on these categories of incident, but also different strategies that we can utilize to enforce the Code of Conduct, including not only looking at our disciplinary responses, but also looking at our interventions and our support programs for students. Those are really two categories of behavior that fall under these particular types of incidents. The School Safety and Educational Climate Incident Report does not capture all of the disciplinary issues experienced in a school district, only those that fit in approximately these 10 categories that rise to the level of seriousness. So the overall numbers are important. We're trying to keep the numbers down, but we are addressing each individual instance when these things occur through a combination of consequences, intervention, communication with the families, and putting support programs in place. And one of the things we did this year as an administrative team over the summer is we talked about how we could be more proactive and looking at situations where kids tend to get into these types of disciplinary incidents, unstructured periods of time, such as entryways into school, dismissal at school, on the bus, in the cafeterias, and transitioning in the hallways. And one thing that I did get to observe myself over the last week or so is the changes in the movement of the middle school students, the way that the middle school has now been reconfigured. The kids aren't wandering through the entire hallway to go from one class to the next. They're staying in proximity in their classes. And so there's less opportunity for them to have an interaction that may not be ideal. And it's easier for them to get to class, and it seems to be working. Mr. McQ is nodding his head. So there are things that we can do in the way that we organize the schools that make a difference in terms of student behavior. Another thing I will note about the middle school is they added an additional lunch period. The number of total kids that are in the cafeteria at one time is a lot less. And I can tell you that the climate in that cafeteria is very, very positive right now. So these are things that we can do in addition to punishing kids and rendering disciplinary consequences. We've got counseling, we've got social emotional learning strategies, and we've got ways that we can reorganize the schools in ways that will be more preventative and more proactive.
Any questions for Mr. Simons?
The main report, as well as the individual school reports, all get submitted? Or is it just the main?
So in the state portal, we have to report on each building individually. And then what I do, just so we can do a data pull so you can see everything at once, is I actually, for our own purposes, pull that all schools data report.
So all these questions we're seeing here, you have to answer in the?
In the state portal.
For each individual school?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, this stresses the cyberbullying in the middle school versus the high school. So glad we made that, or enforced that change with the cell phones to hopefully reduce that down.
And the board did restore an additional administrator at the middle school to help support. I know we do a lot of restorative practices at our schools and a lot of training that was done in PD days in the past and the future. Continue to emphasize that, to help our kids.
One of the things that we're doing at the elementary level this year is a structured program for social emotional learning called Zones of Regulation. The idea of that is, once the kids get up through the elementary schools and the middle school, we're teaching them some of the skills they need, such as, you know, being more self-aware. I don't know, Mr. Stiles, you wanna talk about that? Is that something that is also a way that we're preventing some of these behaviors from occurring by teaching kids some of the skills they need to be able to engage with their peers more successfully?
Right. So through our Social Emotional Learning Committee district-wide, had a lot of discussion around possible SEL curriculum. So we are piloting the Zones of Regulation at the elementary school, in all of our schools, in several classrooms in all of our schools. And we're really excited about what that, you know, can show for us long term. It's a really good, you know, there are some lessons and things that teachers do, but it's really, like Mr. Simons has said, a way for students to begin to start self-regulating, identifying, quote-unquote, what zone they're in, what that means for their learning, and strategies for them, you know, individually to help support, to get them, you know, ready to learn. And then we're gonna continue to do some work with Goff Middle School and the high school around SEL. It will look, you know, a little bit different, but, you know, still focusing that at the secondary level as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles.
Any questions?
Just a comment during the parent-teacher for sports this year, we brought in that person, I don't remember her name, but excellent resource that I think we should bring in on a more regular basis, and I fully support it, you know, to kind of educate, to remind kids, work with groups and teams together to try to reduce down any conflicts. I'd love to support.
I thought she was great. She was a sports psychologist. Actually, Jennifer mentioned her at the last meeting. Yeah, I thought she was terrific, and I think she can be a key support for our kids.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, see no more questions, we'll move on to our regular business. Approval of programs for residents with disabilities. Any questions or comments on that item? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Joanne, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Item B is the 2324 AS7 contract for Bosi's Services. These are the Bosi's services that the district utilizes cooperatively. There's a brief statement there from Jennifer. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Mark, I need a second. Jen, all those in favor? Yeah, item C, acceptance of request for proposal, the architectural services. Just a quick comment on that process. I thought it was very thorough. We had a lot of, what was the total number?
We had eight firms.
Over a couple days of interviewing, a lot of detail provided. We're building off our building condition survey, and I think that process went very well, and I'm pleased to be part of it and recommend LaBella for that contract. Any other questions for us, as board members, or Jen, or Jeff? Need a motion to approve that? Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Approval of the appointment of deputy extra classroom treasurer for Columbia and Goff. Questions? Need a motion to approve that? Joanne, second. Jess, all those in favor? Approved. And then we have approval of parental transportation contract, pretty unique issue. Any questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve that? Michelle, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. Going through this quick. Committee reports, we'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. On tonight's personnel memo on the consent agenda, we are going to be recommending several school bus drivers for appointment. And I want to say thank you to Jill Bonesteal and Tiffany Scott for assisting us in training everyone, getting them prepared for their permits and also their CDL license. And also, a big thank you to Dr. McQueen and Mark Halsey and our entire transportation department for assisting with our continuous recruitment efforts. After tonight, we will have all of our school bus driver positions filled.
Congratulations. Appreciate it. Anything else, Marissa? Jennifer, anything?
Nope, no reports at this time. Thank you.
Right? And Mr. Simons?
Yeah, so our board policy committee met on August 28th to review recommendations from our attorney for changes and updates to our district Code of Conduct, as well as discuss specific areas of the Code of Conduct that relate to electronic devices, including cell phones. Our attorneys made some recommendations that the full board will receive in a discussion item at the next meeting. Really updating the Code of Conduct to be in compliance with any federal decisions that have been made regarding families and students' rights and due process, being clear about language used in the Code of Conduct to reduce gender-based or bias-related language that was in our code, updating the dress code and putting in some language to ensure that we are not enforcing expectations within the dress code that are culturally biased, and also looking specifically at separating out the cell phone policy, electronic device policy at the middle school level from the high school level so that it is aligned with our current practices. Additionally, this week, we had a Code of Conduct committee meeting. This is a separate Code of Conduct meeting that involves staff. We did that via Google Meet. We shared the information with that committee. We took some feedback, and our, Marissa and our attorneys are gonna finalize everything, and you'll see a draft of the revised Code of Conduct at our next board meeting.
Any questions for Jeff? No? Thank you. Next item, table motions. We have none. Full business. I don't think board members, anything? No? Okay. Moving to our consent agenda, items A through H. I'd like to also add the non-instructional addendum to that. So by consent, 13 and 14. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Joanne, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you very much and all your work. Next, we have new business. Board members, anything? No? Okay. Public forums, it's an opportunity for a public to speak. We had our earlier public forum. Mr. Simons made some statements about what happened. Anyone wish to address the board? Yes? No? Yes. Just off the microphone with your name and address.
I don't really have anything prepared today, but I missed the first public forum. So I know that you had mentioned that you spoke about just the threats and stuff, and I know that we've come to, you know, this before, back in March, and expressed our concern about not having enough police officers or security officers at the schools. And I guess I'd just like to kind of bring that up again and reinforce the, you know, fact that parents do want them there, and it would definitely, you know, help us feel safer with the kids and stuff. But I do also want to commend the updates to the bus policy that were enforced, with the buses going to safe spots instead of being sitting ducks here at the school. So thank you for taking that stuff into consideration and just looking to get a little bit more information on also what's being done about. about looking into the person that's doing this? What kind of consequences are there gonna be? Obviously, if this is something that's gonna continue to happen, we should be making an example of, you know, what's going on right now and having some sort of consequence so people don't want to do this in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your comments. Anyone else? I do, just to address the SRO, you know, we do have the SRO program right now. As we enter into our budget process, you know, we'll be talking a lot of things to support the district. And I think every time we do talk about how can we best support the safety of our schools, it's part of our, I think, DNA here. And I think we'll still have those conversations related to it. So thank you for bringing it up again. Okay? Oh, okay. So Roy just whispered, do we want to do the draft minutes now that we have Jesse back in? We had bypassed them. So I'll go back to the draft minutes. I was not there for the 8:23, Mark and Emily, but we do have a quorum for the minutes. So any corrections or comments on the minutes for August 23rd? Seeing none, any motion to approve? Joanne, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Five, staining, Mike and Mark. And then for the minutes for 8:29, any questions or comments, revisions to the minutes then? I had John, Cheryl, Mark, and Michelle were not here, though. So we got one in. All right, okay, we'll move that to the next meeting again. Okay. All right. Yes, Mark?
Can I just say one thing? This was, we did talk about SROs, it was a couple of school board meetings ago. And I know our superintendent has been actively engaged with the chief of police. So I just want you to know, we are, we had a very good conversation at one of our board meetings last month. So I do really want you to know, we are looking into this. We are taking it seriously and listening to you guys. So, thank you.
What's that?
Want to ask a question?
Okay, just, yeah, come up, name.
Jen Creewell, I'm a parent at Janay and Goff. I was not here for the first public forum, so I don't know if this was addressed. I know there's a lot of questions from parents, whether or not we're gonna receive more information about the types of threats that were received, and if there is an ongoing security threat that we should be worried about as parents, and if there's any insight to this lockdown. Because I know we're concerned, I mean, I have a new kindergartner this year. So I'm concerned how she's gonna cope with all this long-term. And I just want to know the game plan and at what point we're gonna be receiving more information on like a broad basis.
One of the things I said at the beginning of the meeting was, I addressed the question and concerns that I've received via email regarding requests for more information about the specific threat. And for two reasons, I really can't provide any more information. And it all relates to the safety of the kids. First and foremost, there's an ongoing law enforcement investigation that is being handled by local police, state police, and the FBI. So I can't say anything specifically about the threat that would compromise an active criminal investigation. Secondly, when we receive as schools these kinds of threats, sometimes there's a lot of information available, sometimes there's not. Message on a voice machine, voicemail box, or a brief phone call to a nurse, there's limited information. Then information gets immediately reported to the police. Some of the swatting events of last year where large-scale threats were being received by a number of different school districts, through the process of the investigation, it concluded that the individuals that were making these threats were in other countries. It wasn't a local threat. We don't know that to be the case with this particular threat, but that's a possibility. Or it could be somebody local. So how we respond to these issues is we try to take into consideration the nature of the threat. We do a threat assessment side-by-side with law enforcement. And what we're doing, what we've done for the last couple of days, is really the least disruptive protocol that we have within our safety plan, which is to have enhanced, secure lockout to make sure that the visitor protocols are being followed very strictly, reducing the number of people that are coming in and out of the building. And we limited outdoor recess and outdoor physical education. I'm confident that this is gonna dissipate, and we're going to get back to normal. I can't tell you at this point when it would be. I'm pretty confident that, you know, circumstances will change. And the other thing that I'm reluctant to do is to characterize the threat or the district's response to publicly, because it's not only the parents of our kids that are listening to this information or receiving this information, because we put information out on the website or on Facebook. Somebody who is involved potentially in these, making these threats, can read this information, and it may trigger them to continue to do this or to change out what they do. So I'd love to be able to, as the superintendent, tell you everything I can. But as I said earlier, I think it would be negligent in doing that because it compromises the investigation and also potentially could perpetuate these kinds of threats continuing on our district. As soon as we are able to release the secure lockout, we will do that. And through our principals, we'll be informing the parents. And again, I expect that it'll be a matter of days.
I have just a quick follow-up question. Is there any security increase at the high school and middle school dormitory at the place, given that we're in a lockdown during school hours?
No, based on the nature of the threat and based on the information we have, we are continuing athletic activities after school and after-school programs. And I think it's important to realize that those are also part of our educational program. And a lot of learning and skills are developed in our athletic program. So similar to where we're maintaining normal instruction in the classroom every day in our athletic programs, we're maintaining our athletic programs. If we had received information that led us to believe that we should have implemented a more restrictive protocol, we certainly would have done that. Thank you for the question.
All right. Moving on to the next part of our board agenda is the board forum. I'll start at my rate this time, Joanne. Jesse, Andy? Jennifer? Mark? Michelle? Cheryl? All right. I just want to also just welcome back everyone. I know it's been a challenging week, but this is a time of celebration, returning to school for our parents and families and all the work and the buses and everything that it takes to get to school. Our administration, our teachers, thank you for everything. Let's have a great school year, and I look forward to future meetings. So with that, we do have need for executive session for purposes of employment history and collective bargaining. So do we anticipate after the board?
We may be coming out of executive session to vote on one personnel item.
All right. With that, any motion to go into executive session? Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? And we'll be in the?
Going to go to the boardroom.
Thank you. One, good night.